Okay.
There we go. All right, it's 1:01 PM. Welcome to the special meeting of Fire District 21 Board of Commissioners. And we'll start with roll call and Bruce Ansel.
Don Crawford.
Rich Bosman's here, I can see him.
Jason Vanderbein.
Kimberly is excused. And then we have guests. Karen Reed is here, Bill Cushman is here, Chris Fossett is here, Heather Logan is here, Scott Brown, and Sean Ward. Thank you, everyone, for attending this meeting, which is to talk about a levy lid lift for Fire District 21. So with that said, I have kind of a laundry list of things that fall under that category, and that's to talk about the communication we got from the library system. That was in the packet. Just before we leave, confirming that everyone read that response letter for District 4 and is okay with us sending that out today. The levy lid lift discussion. And then a resolution to be adopted if we so choose to lift the lid. So I know that Bill Cushman has spent a lot of time and effort on our behalf and has crunched numbers. Just for District 21 now, thank you, Bill, for taking the time to re-rack those numbers. I understand it was a lot more difficult than just plugging in one or two things, but we appreciate. I think the vision that you allow our board to have with that kind of information. We've just kind of been poking along and guessing and hoping, and I think this gives us concrete evidences as to what we need to do and why we need to do it. So I appreciate you working through that. So I don't know, Chief, where would you like to start?
Wow. Well, probably go through some of the, if you want to give a run-up, kind of the communications you've had from the Library District, and maybe a short synopsis of how we got to where we are today. And then we can get into the meat of it.
Okay. So Diane Marsh Smith has been my contact with the Watkin County Library System. And back in November, we had had some communication regarding their potential desire to form a library district to get the funding secured for the Birch Bay Library Facility. And just recently, just last week, I got a message from her checking in and basically indicating that they are moving forward at the November election with a 13-cent levy for the library. And I'm, I don't know what the boundaries of that are going to be. I don't think that's a Watkin County as a whole issue. I think that's more locally here, perhaps even with some Birch Bay boundaries, but I haven't, I haven't confirmed that. So but I replied to her and said, "Thank you." And we are really wanting to go out in August to be kind of in front of the ask-for path, which is going to be us, the Library District in November, and then the EMS levy is up for renewal, I believe, next year. And I don't know what ballot that would be on.
August, I believe, is where they're shooting for.
So the, I guess, the library will be new, the EMS levy will be a renewal. So it's sometimes easier to pass something that's not a new tax. And then, of course, our heavy lift. And I think we have a lot of justification to take to the voters and tell them why we're here. It's been over 10 years. We had long discussions with forming an RFA with Fire District 4. Unfortunately, that fell through kind of at the last minute, but it allowed us to see the plan, to see what funding is needed, and to land on a number that we all agreed upon is necessary to keep us functioning. And I think Bill has put the numbers out. I've reviewed them to the best of my ability, Bill, thank you. It looks like if we do the simple resolution of going to $1.45 by 2027, if our predictions are correct, that number will have dropped down to $1.32. And you know, the other option is to just have a multiplier built into that. But my opinion, and this is just me, and everybody else is entitled to theirs, is that this doesn't really address our big capital needs. It addresses equipment and staffing and day-to-day operations and reserves, et cetera. But it doesn't give us that lift we need to either remodel, rebuild Birch Bay and/or Laurel. And I think I personally would rather not have that automatic multiplier in there and then have to go to the voters for a capital bond. But to say, "Look, we're managing with the $1.45 that was approved, and then we need a chunk for capital in the future." I believe, I don't know, did we include the study in this package, Bill or Jason? We had talked about having like an architectural design study in the RFA plan. Was that included in this one?
To be budgeted for next year, yes.
Okay, so we can still move forward with that process. So other than that, yeah, here we are. I think we have tried to make it clear to District 4 that we are not interested in continuing in the planning process for the RFA. We'll reconfirm that today with a follow-up letter after this meeting. And the next step being, if we do lift the lid, which I'm pretty much sure that's the direction we're going, is then getting on board for the timetables, which I believe is May 14. And I guess my limited concern would be the explanatory statement for and against. And I don't know, Richard Davis or Karen can enlighten us on that. It talks about having to go out and get a committee of fours and a committee against. Maybe Heather, you have more information on this. And I assume we have to do that fairly quickly, or do we, what kind of timeline do we have to accomplish that?
Rich, you may have the exact dates there.
Well, I don't have the cover sheet handy. I don't know, Chief, have you grabbed that?
I do. It's
Very fast.
May 19, the committee statements are due by May 19 at 4:30 PM, and the rebuttal is due May 24. I do have an example pulled up of an ad that we can place on the website for a looking-for committee members. It happens to be from Snoomish County during the marijuana advisory vote, but it's the one I can find online. So we've got a template we could use to advertise for. And I believe that the commission could set the pro committee today. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's two things. You mentioned an explanatory statement. An explanatory statement is what goes into the voters' campaign. And that's something that has to be drafted by the district's attorney. And so depending on which levy lid lift measure you go with, I will draft that and provide that to the auditor. The pro-con committee has to be, both of those committees have to be appointed by the commission. You could take action today on approving the levy lid lift measure. You could also appoint the pro committee. And that can be comprised of, you know, it could be comprised of all commissioners or part, you know, some of the commissioners and the fire chief or other people in the community. It's really kind of wide open. With regards to the con committee, unless you already have people that have shown an interest in this, probably not, then my advice would be to put an ad on the website, as the chief just said, and to see if anybody is interested in serving on that committee. And then at your next meeting, you could, are we going to have one between now and the 19th of May?
Real close. Well, yeah, 15th. Nope, sorry, sorry, wrong month. No, we won't, so we can have a special meeting.
Yeah, you're going to need a special meeting to appoint the con committee. And if nobody, after making a good faith effort to try and solicit interested people to serve on the committee, if you don't have anybody who's interested, then you're not required to, you know, draft people into service. You just notify the auditor, "Here's the efforts we made," and nobody showed up.
Rich, a quick question on that. I recall there was a lawsuit with the Supreme Court recently. Our Supreme Court affirmed that you can require that people on a part of a pro or con statement committee have to live in the district. Is that still, is that correct?
I'm not familiar with that, Karen, but I don't see why that wouldn't be the case, because they're the only ones affected by the ballot measure. So the chief and I were talking about that before the meeting today. And it would be my advice that that's who ought to serve on both of those committees.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, that would certainly make sense. If there's any names out there, I certainly would be willing to entertain maybe Kathy Berg or Dora Lee Booth. Or there's a gentleman in Birch Bay Village that may be interested. So I know that Kathy has followed us religiously, and it would be maybe nice to have at least a discussion. And maybe, Jason, you and I could see if we couldn't have a quick meeting with the two of them if they're around and just give them a heads up and see if they would be interested. I know Dora Lee is an amazing author of information for the county regarding the library district and the BURN project here in Birch Bay, and has been well-connected in the community for a long time. And I would certainly ask them as being very involved and concerned citizens in the community.
I'll reach out to.
So with that said, I think we need to maybe look at some numbers.
Mr. Cushman?
I'm sorry. Bruce, could we back up for just one second?
Yep, yep.
I'm looking at the materials that Jenny kindly sent out to us, and it says that we have to use three efforts. So the website is a great one, and calling people directly is another one, but we do need one more. And they've got all these things you can do. But I think we need, especially when we're showing due diligence and looking for the con committee, we need to make sure we're following this to the letter. And so we'll have to come up with one more way, the simplest way, maybe a press release to the local papers, soliciting people for the con. But I just didn't want to let that go by. This is very, very clear, and it has to be three efforts.
Okay. Would an add in the paper suffice? Would that be better than a press release, or which?
Well, an add in the paper is great, but it costs money. A press release is free.
Well put. Kind of like in the press release idea.
Bill, do you want me to set up so you can share a screen, or do you want me to share mine, and you can talk? Or how would you prefer to do this?
I've got my model open and ready to go.
All right, let me. Okay, if you'd like to share the screen, it's all yours.
All righty. Model one. I've prepared two models. One that isolates District 21, removing all references, all sources of revenue, and all expenses associated with District 4. Right now, you have a levy of $1.15. The proposal is to raise it to $1.45, and then it will gradually erode to $1.32, as was previously mentioned. You have no income from an EMS levy. We show all of the labor costs and M&amp;O, maintenance and operation expenses. So you start January 1, 2021, with $5,377 in the general fund, the creation of an emergency reserve of $1,000,001, an apparatus reserve of just over $1,000,000, equipment reserve with $200,000, capital projects, 440 facility projects, and maintenance of $1,000,000, and $200,000 in a retirement reserve. By the end of '27, you will still have $3,600,000, almost $3,700,000 in the bank. Cash money, December 31. You also have three, almost $3,500,000 in your seven different reserve funds. And you have a complement of 12 lieutenants, 16 journeymen, 10 firefighters, and four bat chiefs. If we were to add, as the chief will reference, four additional firefighters, your ending cash balance will drop from the 3-plus million to $883,000, which is insufficient for operations beginning in 2028. Therefore, you need some kind of an alternative plan somewhere between those two. And because the cost of labor is so expensive, as we can see, the four firefighters will cost a little over $400,000 per year and will grow to $527,000 per year by 2027. So we're talking over $3 million for these four additional firefighters. In the meantime, you still have a fully funded emergency reserve equal to 15% of your operating budget. You have replaced all of these vehicles, including a $1 million, well, $1,700,000 for ladder number 64, ambulances, engines, tenders, and a staff car, and two additional ambulances. You have replaced all of this equipment over the seven years. You have allocated $10,000 per year as a general budget per station for various unnamed maintenance costs. We've eliminated stations 12 and 13. Earlier, it was mentioned, "Do we have money set aside for plans and studies?" And the answer is yes. Right here, $50,000 per year. Now, in this case, we're going to remove the two stations 63 and Station 69 seismic upgrades. We're also going to eliminate the bond issue that was anticipated for $6,400,000 to be sold in 2023. That would pay, and that's a voted bond, so the voters would pay for those two seismic upgrades with an excess levy, so it does not come out of District 21's funding. So we take that out. So you're left with an allowance of $50,000 per year for any sort of architectural land purchase, planning, capital planning needs. And you retain a balance of about $450,000 per year to be used for something unspecified at this point. The bond fund is all paid off. There's no more debt, no more bonds, so you have no bond payments. You have a fully funded retirement reserve and no negative balances anywhere in your reserve accounts through 2027. But the issue right now is it's probably not prudent to set as a goal the fact that you will only retain $880,000 at the end of 2027. That is insufficient. It will not even make, there's not enough there to even make payroll in January of 2028. So some compromise, most likely of these four firefighters needs to be addressed.
And just for clarification, if anyone's listening, that's not for existing ones. That's a future proposed for firefighters, because sometimes people hear the wrong thing here.
Yes, absolutely. And they're budgeted to start in '22. They're not existing firefighters.
How far can we delay that out and make our 2027 needs? I mean, if we went to 2025, so if we took out through '24 and brought them in, what does that do to us?
That allows you to retain $2.2 million in cash. And you would, you would, the $2,186,000 is 63% of what you need in cash. You need them to borrow $1,200,000 out of your reserve funds for the first three months of 2028. When your taxes come in April and May of '28, you would pay back the $2,145,000 that you had borrowed to meet operating expenses and payroll.
What would it look like if we changed to four to three?
Starting which year?
Right away.
All right, starting in '22, we'll go with three and carry that across. Your new there we are. You would end up with $1,586,000. You're only at 46% of your need. You'd have to borrow $1,508,000 out of $3,404,000 in reserve. So it'd be just, you'd borrow about half of your reserve. Now, that says you won't be, you won't also buy a new ladder in '27, probably, at least the first six months. Now, there is one other alternative, and that is, we go to our property tax and explore the idea of somewhere in here doing another levy lid lift.
Right.
What would you, what would you propose? We started in $1.45. What do you, give me a year and an amount. We'll just test it out.
Well, let's see, '22, '23, '24, '25. I'm, let's go to '26 and go back to a buck forty-five.
Hey. You're now back to a million or $3 million in cash, which is almost 90% of your cash need, and you only borrow $366,000 out of your reserve. So that's very doable.
And what year is that?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah.
What if you make it a buck fifty?
We're up to $3,707,000 and 109% of your cash needs. No borrowing required. And that will, obviously, in '28, by the end of '28, you'll probably be back at about 100%. And then gradually diminish. And not untypically, we'll consider another levy lid lift, three, four, five years, say, 2031, '32, somewhere in there.
I mean, I personally think we either have to get in the mindset of of going out every four or five years or resetting it to where it what's the right term, Mr. Davis, if you have a multiplier in there or whatever?
It's called a multi-year levy lid lift.
Okay. So, I mean, I think we have options. I don't know that we're ready to make all those decisions right here today. But I think the important thing right now is is to get the voters to understand that we do need to lift the lid. It hasn't been done in over 10 years. We need to build these reserves. And I'm wondering where exactly we got those numbers. Is this kind of an industry standard you're using? How did you come up with the percentage in reserves, Bill?
Here's an example. This is your apparatus. Let's say that we only put $200,000 in apparatus reserve. Now, this line represents zero right here. So after starting in '21, you have negative balances.
Right.
So the general test is you examine the profile, call it the profile. The idea is you can't let a reserve go negative. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense. So let's try, well, we'll put $300,000 as starting, and then we'll grow it 5% a year. Now, where does that leave us? We still have huge
Right. So, so I, sorry to interrupt, but what I'm assuming is sorry to interrupt, but what I'm assuming is, is, is you've looked at our, our needs as provided by the chief and, and then figured out a number that, that keeps us positive over the duration of the, of the, uh, through twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, yes, there is, as you mentioned or inquired, is there an industry standard, and the answer is probably not. Uh, other than, don't incur a deficit, or don't, you know, don't plan on a deficit.
Right.
Uh, it keep it, so what, at this point, even five hundred a year isn't enough, so let's go back to our seven hundred thousand. Now that's a one-time contribution, or, or it's a starting contribution, then it grows five percent a year. Now here's the, here's the deal. In twenty-six, it doesn't grow at all, and in twenty-seven, you reduce that by fifty percent. Now the reason for that is
We've replaced everything.
Pretty much so, now, there are going to be some more expenses, but for right now, you've got eight years to figure out how to, uh, cover, say, two thousand twenty-eight through two thousand thirty-five.
I, I mean, I, I think it's a good selling point to go to the community and say that we're not going to bond for new apparatus, if, if we can do this lid lift, I mean, we, we can't say that about our, our facilities, our stations, but, you know, I know that a lot of departments do bond, um, apparatus, uh, separately from, from their levy, and I think that's, I think that's a positive selling point for this model, is it allows us to purchase all of our apparatus. Um, has been laid out here in the, in the strategic plan. Um, I mean, as a voter, that, that sounds good to me, um, to say that, oh yeah, I'm going to lift the lid, and then next year you're going to come back for, you know, five million dollars to buy a bunch of rigs, so, um,
Just if I could, Commissioner Ansel, the other thing is with this, the fact that we actually have a working model here is something that is unfortunately new. Um, but it, it shows, it's able to quantify that replacement schedule and put both a date and a dollar sign behind it, so that we know what we've got to do and when we've got to do it, it's, it's no longer buying, um, you know, voting ourself into council manic, uh, debt to buy a fleet of apparatus that then ten years later, we've got to replace an entire fleet again. This allows us to spread out some of those replacements and, and take those into our, you know, into account in our, in our everyday budgeting, what the, the citizens provide to us. And, um, yeah, this makes us more responsible and responsive with our money. And that's something I think that, I, I, I know that's been missing in the past. Why, and that makes this model that much more attractive, and it's explainable.
Right. Right. All right. So, that's kind of the Reader's Digest version of a lot of numbers that were, uh, dumped into this, this program, and, uh, is, is there anything else that you think is super important for us to see right now, Mr. Cushman, or are we good here?
Uh, no, I, I think we're good to go. Um, let's just quickly review the Let me, yeah, there we go. This is a model of your assessed value since two thousand nine. You took a great big dip through two thousand sixteen or fifteen, I guess. You began a slow recovery and then a, a very nice recovery. So the annual compounded growth from two thousand seventeen through twenty-one has been nine percent per year. If we went clear back to two thousand nine through two thousand twenty-one, represented by this dotted line, the average growth over that period was two point eight per year. So the question is, from two thousand twenty-one, for the next seven years, is it going to continue to grow at two point eight? Eight point nine, or somewhere in between? In our previous review of the model, there was a general acceptance of the idea, let's plan on four percent. That's this green line, so it's halfway between the two extremes. Uh, if everyone is still, uh, willing to accept the four percent as a reasonable compromise conservative, we will continue with that assumption.
Well, I don't think any of us can, can predict for sure, but I, I think based, you know, on your model, I feel that that's probably a, a reasonable, you know, we anything can happen, right? Anything, uh,
Sure.
could, could destroy that, but if, if we're using a conservative number to begin with, if, if it goes really bad, it's going to go really bad everywhere for everybody, so we're all going to be in the same boat. Um, I, I, I think that's, you know, if you walked in here and said, I think we should be planning on eight or nine percent, I'd say that we're probably being a little um, overzealous, but, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that number, I I think it's a reasonable number.
That's what nine, if we continued, that's what you, you'd end up with an AV of nine point three billion. Uh, so, take that back to four.
Uh, I, I mean, I hope that doesn't happen for a lot of other reasons.
Yeah. Sure. All right. No, that concludes my, uh, uh, review, and I'll certainly be pleased to enter any alternative data that someone wants to test out or, um, examine the impact.
Chief, I know you've been, been looking at these numbers and, and have scrutinized them over and over, and, and I know, um, some of the rest of the staff up there have, have looked at it. How are you feeling about this right now? Are you, are you comfortable that we've kind of tweaked as many of the areas as, as we can think of at this moment in time?
I, I am, I think there's always, it seems like every time I look at this, I find something else to tweak. Um, and that's, that's probably good. Um, I, yeah, I think this is, this document has been, um, batted around in some form between when we were in the RFA Planning Committee and now, and it's, it's kind of, everybody's had a chance to look at it. Um, and I, I think it's as refined as we're going to get, I, once again, I, I think it's great that we're looking at as many, you know, as all our apparatus replacement or equipment replacement, we're setting ourselves up for a more mature style of savings as, as we, as we age and grow. I mean, I, I go back to the history of North Waukam, and we're really pretty new, two thousand six, two thousand seven, and this is a more mature budget, um, you know, one with employees that are now starting to reach retirement age, and we're, we're planning for retirements, and we're, we're planning for long, for being here long-term. Um, whereas before, we were just kind of, it, it appears that we were just kind of living in the moment, and it, you know, when you look at the assessed valuation and the, and the annual growth, obviously, there were some tough times in there, we don't, we don't know if those are going to happen again, but we're planning for the future, and it will allow us to, even if we do hit those, you know, heaven forbid, those negative growth numbers in the future, we're going to have, we're going to be able to be more stable for our community and for our employees based on some of the planning and things that we're doing now, and setting ourselves up for, for a good, like I keep saying, mature future. So I, I like this, um, this model, this, um, the, all the work that Mr. Cushman's put in here, and um, yeah, I think it, I think it represents a, um, a responsible ask to the voters, I realize it's a big ask, I do. Um, but I think it's a responsible ask, and I think it's the coverage that we need to provide, we've got multiple documents, you know, whether it's the ESCI master plan. Um, we, we need to make some of these service level improvements and infrastructure improvements. Um, that, that have been waiting a long time.
Yeah, we've had these strategic plans, and I have a couple of books here in my office that are a really, really nice booklet, but we never actually pulled the trigger on it, that's tough, so, um, i- it's time, i- it's time, I'm, I'm excited, I think this is a huge step forward for us, so, um, I'd kind of like to hear from, um, anyone else on the board, since I'm the only one that ever talks these darn things. Quit laughing, Karen.
Hey, I got a question, Bruce.
Yeah.
What's the latest, we can push that ladder truck out, I mean, I, I know that we need to purchase one, but what's the latest?
It's, we could push it back, it's, it's just not wanting to end up in the position we were before. You know, it could go back one or two more years. Um, it's already going to be over, as you can see there, it's, it's going to be passed. But it's, it's really a reserve, a reserve truck, and it's not going to be in frontline service, so it could be delayed.
Okay.
It's honestly, sir, it's more about wanting to, um, put what's currently in frontline service into reserves and cycling it through. Where I, I don't want to get caught, caught on that hamster wheel that we're in now with, with old, with old apparatus.
I understand.
I don't want to, I don't want to have to be trading pumpers for ladders in the future.
No, and I, and I understand that, I was just, uh, just thinking. Also, I, I, I'm on the same page with you, Bruce, we, we've had these consultants come in, and we haven't done anything. And, and I'm, I'm right there, we need to, we need to start doing something, we need to start checking the boxes. So I'm in fully, full support of this, so now that we've got that, um, scab off our, our knee a little bit.
Rich Bosman, I mean, you're, you're the, uh, historian here, what thoughts do you have?
Well, I agree with John that, uh, you know, it's time to do it. I like the idea of the one forty-five. Uh, and then maybe in twenty twenty-six, we have enough history to maybe, um, make a valid case for a multiplier, I don't know how common that is, but we'd be able to show how, how we've done with this, and how it goes down, and then we can make a, an argument for a multiplier from that point forward. So we don't have to do this every four or five years. But having said that, I don't know where you would put in a capital request for building replacement or renovation in there. Because that's kind of where I had figured that, so.
Right. Yeah, I, I think this gives us a, a, a great starting point, and, and, you know, the chief and I talked the other day about, um, I think we're getting real close to this, uh, ability to meet, um, with the COVID restrictions, although I hear the numbers are creeping up again. Um, and have like another study session, um, with our board, like, like we have done in the past. Um, so that everyone is understanding of where we're headed and, and what we can do with this money. I probably after the August election would, would be, uh, a, a good time for that long-term one, but we probably should have something before the election um, soon, um, so everyone on the board is on the same page as to, to what we're doing, why we're doing it, um, where we currently are, um, and you know, probably Chris and Heather would be helpful for our board. Um, so that if we are asked questions, we're all answering them similarly, um, to the public.
Yeah, and this, this page that's on the screen right now that Bill has made is a thing of beauty to me, because forever, we've wanted to have a well-planned-out replacement program. And here it is, you know, it's really, to me, it's a really pretty thing to see, because we've wanted this for a long, long time. And, uh, I agree with, with, uh, Bruce, we don't want to do any more swapping pokers for ladders, or however we were getting by, this is, this is good.
You'll be happy to know that I created this apparatus replacement model, that's the first model I ever developed in nineteen eighty-five. Thirty-five years?
It's the test of time.
Yeah, it's well, Bill.
Yeah, we appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Sure.
All right, um, so let's, um, let's, we haven't heard from Scott, John's on board, Rich is on board, I'm on board, Scott, where are you at?
I'm on board.
All right. Can we take that, uh, screen down now?
Sure.
And, uh,
I, I don't know how to
I, I've got it here.
Oh, okay.
Seeing all of the smiling faces in the crowd. Um, um, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, uh, we ought to do next, we have the resolution, we have the choice of, of doing the multi-year or the, the dollar forty-five and, and, uh, the single, um, levy request, which is my preference, I don't know, the, the rest of you, I mean, looking at this model, that's how it was presented, that we wouldn't have the multiplier built in, that gives us some time. I think to be fair to our citizens, to say like, we're not going out for everything right now, that we're, we're, we're testing this, we've done our research, we've hired consultants, we've got all the experts, we've got, uh, a financial model, um, and we want to see if it works, and if it does, then like Rich talked about, then, then maybe we can sell a multi-year one and say, look, with, with what we've done, this is our experience, this is our growth, this is how it's working, we demonstrate to the public that, that we're being fiscally responsible to them. Um, and, and build that trust, so this is my preference is, is to, to do the dollar forty-five for now. But to never, again, let us get lazy and not keep an eye on this thing and stay ahead of the curve, rather than being in this catch-up mode, so, um, should we entertain that resolution now? And, um, if that passes, then we would be able to move forward with our sort of business plan, and, and we've got Heather and Chris here to help us through that. We've, we've got, uh, a member of labor here that, uh, um, could weigh in for us too, because as we all know, we, we can't uh, market the vote yes campaign, um, we can only tell people what we're asking for and why. Um, but we, we will need boots on the ground, uh, at some point to ask people to vote in favor of it. Um, so, um, can we pull that resolution up, or does everyone have it before them?
Got it in the packet.
Well, to be, uh, to begin the discussion, uh, I would move, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero three.
A whole second, uh.
All right. So, discussion, I, I had one question, actually, uh, Mr. Davis on here, the, the, uh, the, the dates in here, I know they're correct, but I'm, I'm I'm looking at the twenty twenty-one in the first paragraph. Can you explain to me, I know that we go to the election in, in August, it says the assessed value for twenty twenty-one, and then to be assessed in 2022. Can, is, I just want to make sure we got the dates right.
Yeah. So you, the, the way it works is you levy this year. So you levy in 2021, but the, you actually collected the following year. So
Okay.
That's why it's like that.
I know it was something like that. I just, just wanted to make sure we had the numbers correct in there. So this is the one time 145 that will diminish likely down to 132 at the end of the six year period that we're, that we're budgeting for. Any other comments or discussion on this resolution? Okay, hearing a knee, seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 2021-03? I want to be able to see everybody here. There he is. All right. Let's, let's do a roll call vote for this, just so that we're all on board. Rich Bosman?
Yes.
Don Crawford?
Yes.
Scott Fisher?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it's, it's unanimous to approve Resolution 2021-03. All right. So we have agreed to lift the lid. Now who's, who's up next? Heather, Chris?
There, there are some, yeah, there's some, I spoke with Chris Fawcett this morning, and there's some housekeeping stuff that we'll have to do as far as how we roll out, how we roll this out. And I took notes and, but I'm still betting that her thirty-second blurb on it will be better than my notes. So Chris, do you mind going over what we talked about this morning?
I don't. Hi, everybody. I'm Chris. So as a little background, my firm, Lund Fawcett, we, we've worked with Karen Reed many times on some of these ballot measures for various jurisdictions, quite a few fire related. And I had first talked with the chief and Karen when you were looking at the RFA and as we know, did a little pause, but really excited that you guys have made this decision and looking forward to helping. So, you know, I think we want to, we want to do a few things before your public to make sure you're ready to roll on this. And that is ensuring that we have strong messages. As Commissioner Ansel mentioned, you can, you can educate about the measure, but you cannot advocate about the measure. So you can provide balanced factual information, and I think you have a good story to tell. But we need Karen and Heather and the chief and any of you, we need to kind of put our heads together and tell the story of how you got here and what you're asking for and what voters are going to receive for that. So what I would suggest we do is we're going to schedule and kind of pull together, for lack of a better term, a steering committee that would meet regularly, starting ASAP. Develop some of those materials that you'd need. You know, you want to get something up on your website. I know you still have information about the RFA on your website. So we'll probably want to update that messaging, identify the communication channels that you regularly use. You know, the PDC would frown upon you doing a whole lot of new, different type of communications. They, you generally need to do the same type of communications that you've done in the past about issues. So identify the ways that we can get information out to your residents. Identify groups that you may be able to tag on to existing meetings and, and share information, newsletters that you could put information in. Just figure out how we can get information out, what that information is, and then develop kind of a regular cadence of sharing information. One piece that you can do is a mailer to all residents. And so we'll probably, given the shorter timeframe, we'll really want to start working on that back, looking at calendar and working backwards to make sure that that information hits when the ballots hit. So people have a piece from you that outlines the situation. And so I think we, we want to just make sure that we have some agreed upon messaging, know how we're going to get it out, and then set the plan forth over the next couple of months to make sure people have accurate information so that they can make a decision on the measure. Heather, Karen, do you have anything you want to add?
I would add is I think that you will be in a better place if you can sort through some of those spending options sooner rather than later. So you'll be able to tell folks whether, what you're going to be doing about that peak transport unit in particular. When, where, yes, no. Those types of, what you can tell the community about what the additional services are to them is pretty important. And you have lots of options here. You just need to figure out what they are, what you're going to do with that dollar forty-five on the, around the edges. We know generally ninety-nine percent of it, we know, but there's that, there's obviously that little piece to make sure you, you have some reserves at the end that you'll need. And also I think probably thinking a little bit more about the point at which you would anticipate trying to restore the lid, that's that in five years or six years. And, and getting those, those things clear so that we're not surprising anybody.
Yeah, Chris's plan is perfect. And you guys do have a good story to tell. You did as an RFA and you still do. But it's important that we get those messages known quickly. It, it works when everyone tells the same story and then the public starts to believe it. Oh, it must be the truth because I keep hearing it everywhere.
All right. So go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. That's, that's just generally the approach. I mean, obviously just kind of hearing that you guys are ready to move forward, but we can quickly move, we can quickly huddle up to move together to get those key materials. You know, generally you want some sort of FAQ that you would put on your website. Some of the key talking points, we'll put together a slide deck that for a presentation, whether you're able to be in person at some point before August, or can you do this, some, some virtual meetings? We'll want to make sure that, you know, the, the staff at least understand that there's a ballot measure. They don't have to be able to talk about it. But they do need to be able to direct people to places because they're going to be somewhat your frontline. So we generally want to do a little training with your staff just to make sure the do's and don'ts, because they can't say while they're in uniform, vote for this, right? So, you know, just give them some basic information, maybe even a little card or something that they could give people if they have questions to drive them to the website for more information. So there's, there's all these types of things that you can generally do that are appropriate. But we just need to, like Karen said, make sure that we can tell the story. You guys are telling it all the same way. And then use the existing channels to, to push it out.
Great. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Yeah. So, so as far as we talked about, like a subcommittee, a communications committee, like Chris just talked about. Is there a commissioner that would like to do that? Sit on that committee with us?
Hey, you know, I'm going to throw this out here right now, guys. I am leaving the third of May and I'm not returning until the seventeenth. So I'm, I'm pretty much out with the dates that we have in mind. So just, just throwing that out there. Sorry.
Hey, we're doing by Zoom. You can do it. I was, I did him in Arizona, man.
I may be in, I'll, I'll be in packing and, and moving mode and everything else. So I'm, I've kind of freed up these dates with my daughter. I'm not going to be able to see her for quite a while. She's going to Germany. So, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much out.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Appreciate the warning. Well, see, I, I'm the only one that doesn't have anything better to do than go fishing. So I'm, I'm always, I'm always available to help out in any way, shape or form. So I'm excited about this whole thing. So I, I, I'm going to be talking about it whether I'm on the committee or not. So.
But that, you're, you're kind of a natural fit, but I didn't want to impose on you. I didn't know what you had planned.
Come on, Karen could have nominated me.
We will argue.
Ask Bruce. Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we were talking about a weekly, kind of a weekly huddle, maybe an hour a week, just to make sure that, you know, we're doing like Chris talked about the reverse planning, making sure we're hitting those dates correctly and getting things out. And it won't, it won't be so much work that you have to do, sir, as making sure that just that you have the, you've got the story straight, you know, that you're, you're aware of what the rest of us are up to. So.
Well, I, I mean, with that said, I think, I think while everyone's here, we should pick a date and get this thing up and running. We've got, we've got some deadlines here that, that have to be met. And so I don't know if, if we're, we're talking Friday of this week or beginning of next week or where people are at here.
So I guess I would ask Mr. Davis, what, we've got to get a pro, well, the board needs to appoint a pro committee, correct? They can do that now?
They can do that today.
Okay. And then we need to advertise for a con committee. And that can be done via the website, the press release, and what was your third idea, Heather?
The press release was my third idea. The other idea was, what did we talk? Oh, I, nobody knows anybody. They can just call it. I don't know, hates fire and.
I generally tend to run in the circle that likes the part.
I thought you guys were going to, excuse me, ask, ask those individuals if they'd be willing. So is there an awkwardness of appointing them before you ask them?
You're, the, the people that I recommended or suggested, yeah, I, I I can reach out to them today via email and just see if they'd like to meet with me or the chief or both of us and just get a sense. I, I, as far as I know, they probably still think we're marching forward with an RFA at this point. So.
Yeah, I was just thinking you might not want to appoint them to the pro committee until you've checked it, make sure they're willing to be on it. So and you probably, you, you may have a little time there. You could do that. If Rich concurs, you might be able to point both of those that you're advertising.
You could call a special meeting. It does say in the materials from the auditor that you're supposed to have those appointed at the time you submit the resolution, but you've got, you've got a couple of weeks for the resolution has to be done. So.
Is, I'm sorry, is it appropriate, inappropriate to have someone in labor on the pro committee or where does that fall?
That's, that's totally appropriate.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Is there anyone in labor that might want to be on that committee, Scott?
I, I would do it.
I was just gonna add, I think generally to you, just want to think a little about, you know, sort of, it's always nice for some geographic diversity, some different issue area diversity, right? To think about, like, if somebody's looking at this, who, who do they trust to say, oh, I like how they think. I'm going to think like them, right?
Well, that's why I was kind of reaching out to, you know, we've either got the chamber here, we've got the Birch Bay Village. I mean, I live in Birch Bay, so I'm, I'm only thinking sort of narrowly here in Birch Bay, but it's where we do a majority of our business in the fire service here. So if we could get either someone from the village or someone from Simi Amu or someone from the chamber, that would certainly have a lot of pull in, in this area. And then if maybe some other people know of other areas that we could solicit somebody, Rich, somebody out your direction. And, you know, Laurel or Blaine or whatever.
Commissioner McMurray might be a great resource in that, on that east side there.
Yep, yep.
And they're a long time.
I might have somebody off the Sweet Road area that might be interested.
Where's that?
Off the Sweet Road.
Okay. All right. Anyway, just.
Get in touch with them today.
Heather?
First, I'm noticing again in these materials that Jenny sent that one of the suggested ways for soliciting for either pro or con is requesting volunteers to serve during any commissioner meeting where the proposal is being discussed. The last time I looked, there were seven people watching on Zoom. So this might be an excellent time to encourage that bunch to contact Chief Vanderveen if they'd like to serve on a pro or con committee.
Good idea.
Maybe you should verbalize that.
So, yeah.
So Jenny.
As long as they're not just all current staff and employees that are.
One never knows.
So if you're out there watching and you're not wearing a uniform right now, or if you are wearing a uniform, but you live in the district, that would be anyway, please contact us and, and express your desire to assist with this ballot process.
There you go. One of the three.
Was that, Heather, was that, was that a good advertisement? Can I check one of those boxes now?
You bet. One of three done.
All right.
And Bruce, I'd be willing to help you out any way I can. I just got a, a really busy summer, so I don't want to commit to anything, but when I'm around, I'll be glad to sit in on any of the meetings you need help with.
Yep. I, I, I'll be picking your brain as usual. So don't think you're going to get away with it. Do we want to hear from Scott at all today? I do. Don't know if you're prepared or not, but.
I'm assuming you're talking about. Yeah, this Scott. Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm happy that the levy's going forward. And I mean, we're, you know, I'll send an email out today and we'll do what we can to help. And, you know, I'll contact the big 106 and political action and we'll see what we can do there. And yeah, it sounds like a good plan. And I like seeing the spreadsheet and kind of like what Chief Santa like having the replacements spread out, not just all at one time, kind of like what we did when we all got hired. So and I'm happy to be a part of the committee if you have me. And yeah, thanks again. And then this Thursday at the executive board meeting, we're gonna make a motion to support the levy. And so on the ballot or whatever, the, whatever we need, it'll stay supported by local 106. So that's kind of all I have at this time.
Appreciate your guys' help. And if it, obviously, we've been able to remain in good communication and hope that we will continue to do that. So Chief Ward, you've been quiet, but I know that you have a lot of experience in this district and have the insights you would like to offer us. You're muted. Somehow you're muted.
I can't, we can't hear you at all.
Doesn't show muted.
I can hear you, but I can't hear you.
All right. We get two thumbs up. Anything else? Am I missing something here? Are, are we good to go?
We're good to go. I'll, I'll double check, catch up with email. Richard Davis had to step out for a previously scheduled appointment. So that's why you saw him drop off. But I will send out an email, getting together kind of the, the comms group, so we can set our first meeting for that. And, and we'll circle back with, with Mr. Davis as far as make sure I get our dates in line. We may, I, unfortunately, we didn't check with him before he left. Sounds like we may need to have a special meeting before Karen's nodding her head. Before we have our actual next regular meeting so that we can, is it to set the committee or to set the pro, the pro con committee?
I think you want to, you'll want to do that. You'll want to confirm what you've got on the pro con committee. And you will probably also want to double back and take a look at some of the, the messages that the comms committee is coming up with to confirm that we are, we're all in the, pointing the same direction around where, where the levy is going to go.
Right. And yeah, and the, those, and that, that committee will take, will solidify kind of the, you know, what is the benefit to the levy? What is, what are the, what are the improved services that we're going to be able to offer? Some, you know, I realize we, we talked about a lot of things here, but those of us that have been, you know, we've been kind of working together. We know, we know what we're going to roll out. We just got to put it, get it all in the same sheet of music. So.
Karen, what happens if we follow all the protocol for trying to get a con committee? And we don't get any? Are we covered?
Okay, that's, that's fine. You just have to. Okay. That's, that's fine. You just have to go through the, the motions of seeking one.
All right. Thank you.
And actually Commissioner Bossman, I went back through, uh, actually Jenny, Jenny steered me in that direction, but I went back through looking at what was done in two thousand eight for the levy lid lift. And in that case, there was no con statement submitted. And it just says like in the voter's pamphlet, no statement submitted. So.
You'll, you, you'll also want to take a look at the ballot, um, language, the ballot pamphlet language that Rich Davis will write for you at some point.
All right. He said he would be working on, quote, that explanatory statement.
Yes.
And, and so it also talks about the committee itself officially being not more than three people. Although more than three can have input to it. So, um, I'll reach out to, um, the few people I know up here and, and see if they are interested. And then when do we want to physically get together again? Is Friday too soon or?
For the comms committee or the board? Your board?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll have Jenny send out a, a comms committee, um, kind of query for the rest of the week. Um, maybe if we, I won't be able to do it tomorrow, but I'm, I'm good the next couple of days, but we'll, we'll see either late this week or early, early next week, like Monday of next week. Um, and then, um, now let me clarify with Mr. Davis about when we need to have that special meeting so that we have the most, the maximum amount of time to gather the pro and con committee pieces that.
Right. He said, well, it had to be before the nineteenth. What was the deadline?
Well, the statement is due on the nineteenth.
Right. But we needed to have a meeting before then is what he said.
Yes, we need to give them, if there's going to be a con committee or a pro committee, they need to have time to write that statement. So.
So the week of the tenth would be of May would be your, your prime week to do this special meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I can make any of those dates work if I have to. Well, Jenny, just send out a.
Oliver, Oliver, send out a, a query for the eleven, the week of the tenth. For especially.
That work?
That week.
And that doesn't preclude us from, um, communicating and taking care of other essential details in between now and then. Okay. Is there any other business before the board that has to do with the levy lid lift? Cool. Um, thank you, everyone for attending today. Appreciate your time and efforts and support. And, um, I'm really excited that we're moving forward with this. So, um, let's, let's get it done and get it passed. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor?
All right.